All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome everyone to your village board meeting of January 26th, 2023. Tonight, on longer silence, be in honor of the victims of the Monterey Park shooting in California. Let them one please rise, pledge allegiance, and say on a silent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we move on to tonight's agenda, let me begin by introducing your village board, starting with the call hands, trustee Christopher Graziano, thanks to him, trustee Vic Forelli, thanks to him, is trustee Susan Sirella, thanks to her, it is my deputy mayor Tara Bure. And of course, to my right, is village board chairman, and I am the mayor. So just before we begin, without comment on agenda items only, I will add the two additional items that are not listed on the agenda. They are on there, okay. One of them is the purchase of a vehicle for the water sewer department, and other one was some necessary governmental work for Truck Rock Well 11. So at this time, I will start with the public who joined us via Zoom. Does anyone have any comments on tonight's agenda? Not hearing anyone in the public wishing to speak on anything on the agenda. One, two, three. All right, move from right along to administrative business. Okay, can I please have a motion in second to accept receipt in a minute, so the meeting held on January 12th, 2023?
Motion.
A second.
All right, all in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's the comment, will you please read abstract 14?
Abstract 14 contains vouchers 221472, 221526, a total of $1,100, $49,831, and $1,777.
All right, can I please have a motion in second to approve abstract 14 as read?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fire department equipment request, can I please have a motion and a second to approve fire department equipment request? Number one, 2023, totaling $3,080.75 for the purchase of two Rex tools, EMI finger ring cutter, four EMS replacement blades, four boxes of cover wells in various sizes, gas calibration mixes, and various adapters.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I have here on the agenda to discuss the potential for moving art there, or maybe condensing into one. But we've spoken, I've spoken with the rest of the board, I think we're going to leave. The ninth and the 23rd is our meeting night, and we will get to one of the public hearings that we have scheduled for one of those nights, and maybe move that into March. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there, so. Okay. Update to fire department membership, so can I please have a motion in second to change the status of the following individuals from active to inactive at the request of Chief Burke, Keon Hagan, Ken Pan, Francis Carcello, John Ham III, Zachary Eden, Matthew Petty, Nicole Pease, Christopher Riley, Kevin McSherry, James Rizal, Masachi, Nicholas Doobin, Edward Smith, and Eric Rubens.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just for clarification, this is usually the month that the membership records are clear, that's why there are so many, but it does highlight the need of fire department personnel, because we lost 13 in coming here. So, anyway, resolution, reliving a previously exempted. So can I please have a motion in second to adopt the following resolution as presented, to reliver your prorated tax exempt due on properties located in various locations that were previously eligible for exemption?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need to schedule a meeting to interview for the ZDA, so the date I'm looking at is February 6th, to conduct interviews of individuals that have submitted letters of interest to volunteer on zoning board of appeals. So as of right now, we've got three, three letters. So I am assuming we need 15-minute blocks, would that be sufficient of board's pleasure? And I don't know if February 6th works for everybody.
February 6th?
I don't know. Yeah, I gotta come for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We said this for the ninth.
When are we gonna do it before the meeting? Okay, okay, so let's do that. No, you won't be there, you okay with that?
Okay.
So if we do it February 9th, we have to do maybe 6:30 to begin?
Zoom.
Zoom, perfect.
Yeah, remember the deadlines of the...
We did, yeah. So, all right, so we're talking about doing this February 9th, 6:30, to conduct interviews for the zoning board of appeals, and it'd be done virtually? So do I have a motion in second on it?
Just to clarify, they wanna come personally, anything, no?
Sure, unless they bring Danish.
Okay, I didn't know how you wanna do it, since you're all gonna be here anyway.
Yeah, we're all, we're all doing that.
Sugar-free Danish.
Sugar-free Danish. I will take case sugar, how's that sound? All right, motion in second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, since we will not have the full board at the February 23rd meeting, and I do want a full board in attendance for this, so I would like a motion in second to change the Public Hearing introductory local law one of 2023 entitled Short-Term Rentals to March 9th.
Motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a discussion about the Local Law 10 event venues. So we received the comments back from the planning board. Right now, we're to defer to Kelly, we want you, our attorney, to review with us some of those suggestions from the planning board, and the board can decide whether we're gonna incorporate that into the review law.
Right, and you have time to think about it, but I just wanted to oversolve them. Some of them are very minor, obviously, there's some typographical errors, inserting word here and there, but the planning board did want to require at part of food service, which is pretty important, proof of the required insurance and permit that they provided to the building contractor prior to CO, and that's usually necessary regarding food trucks or catering business. Insofar as a temporary structure, the temporary structure needed to have a length of time that it was permitted. So there's a length of time that's permitted under the building code, and then the length of time these people are required to have it, and usually that can change from event to event.
Let me just, one second, Kelly, I don't know if the board's pleasure is just to act on each of these suggestions and then have the attorney put them in there?
So I provided you with the red line version, I can go through them, and if you have an objection, then you can jump in. Or, I mean, they're in there right now, so let me not make any exceptions.
No, our value planning board will put them in there when we're really successful.
I love where the planning board edit, I'm fine with what they've added.
What they added?
Yeah.
There is a lengthy discussion, if anybody watched the planning board video, regarding the temporary structures on the tent, that is very important to them. We've all heard the stories and read the stories that are horrific, with heaters underneath tents, or people dying of fireworks underneath tents, things like storing the gas under the tent, so the board was really concerned that something like that could happen at an event venue, or in light of the safety concerns. So there's a new subsection J, which, I won't go through the entirety of it because it's like two-faced, but it deals with access seating, storage of propane, gas, fireworks, will not be permitted under the tent, or at second tent, the board didn't want those. There was additional estimated water and super demand that had to be provided for each event. I mean, if you go to any of these events, usually they have the gas in the board planning, so there needed to be the proper permits there, and then stating what the water and super needs work for that. There's some other minor changes. One big change that they proposed was the duration of the special use permit. So right now, you have that in here, as if the property is sold or otherwise transferred, and then the government would become null and void. But the planning board thought that if somebody purchased the property and still wanted to use it for that same use, they would not be able to use it until they got it re-approved, but that it wouldn't need to have everything converted back to whatever the prior use was, that they would have a period of time to, we proposed six months, but obviously, that should provide some kind of potential addition. If they're diligently proceeding for the planning board, and it takes eight months in that two-month period, they're still not able to use it as an event venue, but they shouldn't have to tear down any additional structures to get it back. So they provided additional provisions in M. And also, that's just a general overview, one thing that I did is I also provided this report to your village inspector. I know that he's on, he did get back to me on those, he also had some additional changes that he thought would be appropriate for the local law, so I will be providing them with an updated version. You have a lot of these comments that address the building code and the fire code, and they're really in his purview, to give you a bit of his advice and whatever. That's my brief summary.
Your representative, I did, I thought the suggestions from the planning board were reasonable, and really good suggestions, especially in terms of fire safety. So I don't know if there's any questions for attorney on any of this? Any further suggestions that we may want to discuss, or we could just move in this alone?
No, just to clarify, the event, the property sold, the event, cannot hold events, but they don't have to tear it down, but there's no events to be held?
No events to be held, but they don't necessarily have to, but they do have to, if they're choosing not to use it as an event venue, then those structures...
Okay.
I have a question, under Part L, criteria for approval, A, the size and capacity of the site to accommodate events, including but not limited to temporary structures, the color and style of which shall be reviewed by the ARB. The temporary structure would be subject to architectural review?
So they were concerned that somebody may wanna put up like a hot pink tent right near the road, so it was more that each individual tent would need, I know it's a bad example, but let's take that. Some people love hot pink. So they just wanted the ability, not to leave every single tent, but to have a general, this is the typical style that we put up as a host. Obviously, the smaller ones that are put up by catering facilities and things like that, they're not gonna come into play. But the larger ones, the planning board thought that they should at least be able to regulate the color and the style so that it does still blend in with the neighborhood, you know, it's neutral, it's unobtrusive, and that. That was the thought, if the board doesn't want that, or wants this to be further clarified, so it points out the difference of catering and the other ones that can serve.
Would it be simpler, sorry, I meant to be simple, just to say you can have a white blue or a brown panel?
I don't know if it was the colors that you want?
No, I don't know, I'm just, I'm throwing a couple of others. But those tents are temporary, if there's a special event there, and you wanna put up a specific tent that goes up and down, or down?
I'm just trying to make it easier, not make the process longer.
No, so temporary tents under the building code, I believe that they can stay up for about six months, so that's temporary, however, but for different events, for event venues, they often, some have the same facility, if you look at West Hills, they'll put up the same tent every year. But if you look at some other facilities, you'll get a smaller tent for a smaller event, if you're having a small wedding, or if you're having a large wedding, they'll have a bigger tent. So the thought was that on the site plan, the location of where they think tents may be should be located, so those different locations should be evaluated, as well as, these sorts of styles are being proposed, they're acceptable, these sorts of styles are being approved.
So when Rushmore goes for site plan approval, it would be under that with ARB, not each individual event?
Not each individual.
That's what I'm calling. Sorry, I don't want his going back to ARB.
No, no, this one won't have that.
Oh, all right.
So maybe I should clarify that, it's more a general
Yes.
style of color, rather than, if the tent is going out for three days and coming back, then they have to go back on, that's the...
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just, just trying to be practical.
No, no, I'll clarify.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Attorney.
When are we getting Mike's comments?
I'm sorry?
Mike's comments?
So he, he sent them to me already, I just have to incorporate them, but this was just the planning board's comments, so I have your revised version, and I will outline what Mike's comments are. You'll have this version, you'll have that version, and obviously, you make whatever you need to do. Okay, you forgot, you forgot Mike's comments.
Yeah, 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 no, he's here additional.
Oh, he's here additional comments.
Additional.
Yeah.
I have a question. With regards to the definition of an event venue, should it address, it addresses, the definition states that it's where compensation is paid to the property owner? One of them events where he decides to donate his space to a nonprofit?
Which is a great question, that is actually something that was raised, that I was trying to work out earlier, and it's one that comes back to you, because I know that there are a lot of, I actually, we have the proposed 2023 list of events for the existing event venue, and some of them are for nonprofit groups, where this basically used free charge, and I have to figure out a way to work that in the law where it doesn't incorporate if a property is burnt, it doesn't become an event venue for just a nonprofit group. So I'm trying to find it now, a way, I mean, I haven't come up with it yet.
Okay.
But working.
So the movement is supplemental, or, or, so you guys, more generally, generally using the power of workers that were in events, and they decided to work it on commercial event, and catch the path, and...
Well, you just gotta buy it in there.
They still have to follow the protocol as a regular compensated event, that's what I'm getting at, it doesn't, I feel like it doesn't kind of...
It doesn't say that, because right now, the way it reads is that nobody can have a free event.
Right.
And I think it's important to allow it to apply to the free event, but I've been a little frustrated by it to work it in there, so my thought right now is they give somebody a dollar, and then it's more compensation, which I can't really get it in there yet. I'm willing to ask for some dollars. Yeah, you know, but at least then, you know, they would be able to record, I got my dollar, but it's fine. Not a good solution, so I'm trying to come up with something to try over that. But very...
If anything, please come on board. All right. So I will then move on to the moratorium resolution. So attorney, I go back to you once again. What have we added to the exemptions, the additional exemptions this round?
Great, so the resolution that you have before you, it includes the prior two exemptions, and then updates it to include number three, which are applications to planning board, zoning board, or the building department for ARB's site plan special permit, and building permit group if necessary, or it's well-anchored for an additional tenant number pursuant to the 1035. Those are the mother-daughters that you currently have pending, right now, that are required to go to the ZDA for a special permit. If the property is sold, then the permit is, becomes null and void, similar to the event venue that you're looking at. So there's individuals in the village that are looking to, that bought the property, that have mother-daughters, but when they acquire it, it becomes null and void, so they're looking to continue to have it as a mother-daughter, and this was something that the building inspector suggested. Then the fourth is applications to the planning board, zoning board, and/or building department for ARB's site plan special permit, building permit approval as necessary for any new building construction, renovation, or expansion of an existing building, or a change of use or intensity of use that would result in an increase in water usage less than or equivalent or equal to 220 gallons per day. So that number, we've talked about with Mickey, and we've talked with Natalie, and I believe they confirmed with Chris as well, so that there is some increase in water usage, but it's not drastic, and it also says that you can only get one waiver under this, not, you can't compound that 220. So you won't be able to get, oh, I got one, and then two, and then three, and then all of a sudden, you're at 660, you're limited to the one. So those were some suggestions to allow some of the applications that are pending, waiting, and also people who wanna add small additions to their homes, for proceeding forward, so long as it isn't a drastic issue.
Any questions from the board? All right, can I please, then, can I please have a motion in second to adopt the the resolution as presented, amending the declared regulations relative to the hardship waiver process adopted in accordance with local law five of 2022, continuing moratorium, certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and rules.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Here I'll leave this. Motion. Okay. Introducing Local Law Two, that we have entitled Tax Cap Override.
Very creative, that's right.
I tell you, she's great. So I need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law two of 2023 entitled Tax Cap Override, override the tax levy limit for fiscal year 2023, 2024, established in General Municipal Law Section 3C.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I please have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing that will be held on February 9th? To entertain public comments on introductory local law two of 2023 entitled Tax Cap Override.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Bure. Give it to you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right along, we need to schedule a public hearing for a moratorium waiver class, 16-country holiday. Can I please have a motion in second to schedule a public hearing that will be held on February 9th, 2023, at 7:30 PM, to entertain public comments on a petition received from Chi Pine requesting a waiver of local law five of 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Authorize advertising for bids, the building department bought this building, which we better known as the Osswell Building. So can I please have a motion in second for authorizing advertising for bids for the remodeling improvements of the office building located at 19 Adams Street, for the building law?
Motion.
You okay? It's a motion, everybody, like, motion. Yes, I'm just so emotional on this topic, okay.
So we'll just renovate, we're gonna renovate the entire building, or what's the scope of the law?
I need a second before we...
Yes, can I get a second? Okay, there you go. So we had a very, very solid meeting with Bobby Blair, our new director of building ops. Building and ground superintendent is the official title. So Billy, Bobby went over there with Mike Pinella, looked at the space, thinking the only thing we're gonna need to do is going to be to renovate the garage portion of the loading dock portion of that building, which needs to be made into viable office space. Bobby thinks he can handle the rest of what's there, in terms of the tile, in terms of painting and carpeting and whatnot, fixtures, which should save us a substantial amount of money, moving forward. So we are also, not only are we authorizing this, but we're also gonna try to meet with the architect once again next week, I don't know if you...
I sent the email, isn't it?
Okay, so we're gonna meet with them again to sort of give Bobby a speed on the project, give Michael a speed on the project. So right now, what we're doing is just our due diligence to move it forward. So anybody have any questions for me on that? So I got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right, Truck Rock Well, number 12 project, so can I please have a motion in second? To the plan of the village of Woodbury, or to trustee says lead agency under SECPRA for the project owner's new water supply route and transmission name, AKA Truck Rock Well 12.
You can't say anything different.
I know. Motion. I'll, I'll give it a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion in a second, please, to type this project as unlisted under SECPRA.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Coffee, espresso, double espresso. Eeyore.
Aye.
Uh...
Okay.
Motion, now do I have to?
Oh, God.
Oh, God. Can I please have a motion in second to authorize each two M architects and engineers as the engineers for the villagers to make any and all necessary submissions to the New York BEC, New York State DOH, Orange County DOH?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's great. All right, finally, on Well 12, can I please have a motion in second to approve the submission of regulatory permitting applications?
Motion. Second.
I don't know what I want to see.
That is...
I don't want your voices. I'm sorry, second.
Well, you didn't like the other one.
We had, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, so we've got some secret actions for Truck Rock Well number 11, it doesn't have a fancy name like everything else. So this was one of the extra items I mentioned earlier. So can I please have a motion in second to assume we, for the village board to assume lead agency, as there's been no objections received today?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I please have a motion in second to issue a net debt, and give it a declaration?
Motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
And that ends Truck Rock Well 11. Okay, moving right along. Even a second. Okay, and one additional item, we received the specs on Tuesday, so we decided to throw this on there. So can I please have a motion in second to authorize the village park to advertise for bids to purchase new vehicle for the water sewer department?
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Susan Sirella, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you have it, regular business, we'll be split.
That's awful.
That's awful. All right, public comments, our favorite portion of the meeting. So I will start with those who have joined us via Zoom. If anybody in the public wishes to speak, please.
Please.
Uh, let's start, Alfonso. Chris Curver.
I don't know how to raise my hand.
Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to get that to, so you have a video too. Oh my goodness, doesn't matter, oh, there it is. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board from the Woodbury Climate Smart Community Task Force, we've been working with Tara and Mayor quite regularly here, we are working on a collaboration with the local library to host a Earth Day through Arbor Day celebration and educational piece, and so I just wanted to thank everybody for helping us pull this together, we're planning a tree planting event on Saturday, the 29th, which is the day after Arbor Day, and we've got very good things in the works, we're currently a climate, clean energy communities, we're one point away from getting our grant from Clean Energies, so everybody's working very hard with making our community more green and eco-friendly and sustainable energy, so I just wanted to thank everybody for hard work.
Thank you, Lisa, does anybody have any questions, Lisa? And please, please tell Natasha that, as she can... And please, please tell Natasha that, as you can see, nobody, nobody bitter, nothing. She's calm and breathing. Shall we say? It's a safe space. It's a safe space.
Well, we might have to get her poo or eeyore character. They'll still fit right in.
There you go.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, anyone else in the room who has joined us via Zoom wish to speak? Once? And twice? All right. Going out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to speak? And right to the podium?
I just got a question.
I don't know if you would just introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Jimmy A, I'm here because I saw the notice about short-term rentals, so I hope it here. What does that really mean? There's something proposed, there's something you're looking for. What's the best way to put it is we're looking to control?
Yeah. You're putting in procedures and policies to regulate short-term rentals. What do they really mean?
So for me, this is a big deal because I'm here and so what I have heard was Monroe is coming up with a bunch of stuff. But what they propose is, you know, the legitimate landlord has to go through all these filings and everything else. Our issue is these short-term rentals, they're not, they're not supposed to be doing it. They're not going to pay attention to that. But what I can tell you, bringing it doing, most properties have started doing it. It seems like they're struggling. Every rental seems like they're putting, they're, they're being posted for rent on Zillow, Redfin instead of private. A couple of homes are for sale now rather than continuing on. Whether, I know, I know Mike and Vic had to, had to deal with one of the homes where they were served. They're not for sale, but other homes seem like they don't want, like bother with it. So it seems like we have it on the ropes. So anything, anything legitimate that we could react quickly and be effective, it seems like it's not worth the bother to go through this process.
Well, what we were looking to do was we couldn't outlaw them, is the best way to put it. We couldn't say, you can't do this for your home. So what we're trying to do is regulate that. Okay, put in where the building department's involved. There are other issues that go along with that, fire safety and people's safety, going renting these homes and whatnot. But we thought the best way to move forward with this was to kind of regulate it through the building department. So that's really what the local law is going to quickly is.
But again, okay, I'm doing this. You have, you have your, how do we put it? You have all these regulations in place. I own this home. You tell me, no, you're setting my risk, you're going to put little fines and liens. But I ignore them. What can you really do? You can put liens, you can put judgments. If, if I'm not functioning in the world where I'm applying for credit, I'm getting loans and everything else, you can't do anything today. That's, that's the issue. And I've spoken to, to, to lawyers, people doing handwork. That's where the problem lies. If I don't, if I'm not scared of you, it doesn't matter what you say. That's the one issue where we run into that brick wall, where you know what? Okay, I don't know. Either whether it's, oh, it's family, or it's this, or it's that. But the plain disrespect that, you know what? Your word, the, the, the building department, nobody is able to enforce anything. And that's where our issue is. Where it seems like they don't want to even be bothered, like, hey, what are you doing? But you're going to want that one landlord who's just going to ignore you. Do that, I'm doing what I'm doing. And what are you going to do? And that, that's really where, you know, what are you going to do?
Jimmy, can you say?
I think you would take that as a concept, that's an unusual situation. There's different options that the board has between civil fines, stop order orders, injunctions, and then going to Justice Court for the federal fines. But I think they have to consider that on a case like this.
Well, how long, how long can I drag it out? With you attempting to stop me before I get to this point?
You have the potential to drag it out. I'm not going to say how.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so the board knows, there is new legislation that we're, I'll have on, and I'll communicate with the board after I do a little more research on it. There's a new bill that was proposed by one of the legislators in Ulster County to actually have a state regulate short-term rentals. So we have to see if that's going to be passed and how that would then interact with local regulations as well. So putting that on the radar because we didn't have enough. I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? All right. Department comments, starting with Jason. I hear you're here for Mickey today, huh? I wasn't, no, not anymore.
I, I am, I am. I have no comment though.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, Mike Pennella.
Uh, no, no comments here, thank you.
All right. Mr. Wyatt.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Village clerk Poplin?
Yeah.
All right. Starting at the end of the table.
All right, just want to say thank you for everybody coming tonight and have a good day.
Is that it?
That's it for me, too.
Trustee Ferrelli.
I don't know how to follow that. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. What I want to do is, I wanted to walk it down, an upcoming event on Saturday, February 11th, the Heart Dance, that the Woodbury Community Association is holding over at Falkirk. If you haven't seen the posters or the flyers that are around town, please look at it or contact me, I can send it to you. It's a great night out. It's a lot of fun. All the proceeds go to the American Heart Association. And over the years, the WCA has raised somewhere between 25 and 30,000, I don't know how much, that has gone directly through the American Heart Association. So it's a good, it's a good night out in the middle of February, there's nothing else going on. And it's for a great cause. So please think about it and I would love to see you there on Saturday, February 11th. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Trustee Cirella.
I would like to share with everybody that I attended the National Night Out Committee meeting. That's being spearheaded by Councilman Calori. Just so everybody knows, National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood, with neighborhoods to make our neighborhoods safer and a more caring place to live. It's a national night that takes place across thousands of communities in the country, in all 50 states. Neighborhoods host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and other events. So we are working on securing neighborhood location. And hopefully, we'll be able to do it. It will be on August 1st from 5 to 8 PM nationwide. So that's pretty exciting. We're hoping to bring a great community event for everyone. That's it. That's it.
There will be a debate.
August 1st from 5 to 8 PM. And it's a, the intent of it is to be a leave your mom at home event. It's not something you go and buy and purchase. There'll be things like, you know, things we're talking about, nothing, it's just, you know, face painting, bounce house. There'll be, the police will be there with the canine. And there'll be maybe games and relays and things to that nature where it's a positive community event with our law enforcement, we'll have fire department there, AMS there. And that's something we're trying to pull together for August 1st.
At the right.
Location, please.
Yeah, because it would be a public.
Right, so we're working on that. I don't want to say, but it's in the works. When we settle on that, then we'll move forward with the rest. Thank you for doing it.
And I do thank you also for volunteering, it was easy, last meeting. Who?
You found a passion project.
Maybe now. Some people raise their hand always. Deputy Mayor Beer.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending and for your participation. I can't, I can't do this without you, sorry. So I'm very big on educating my stop. I'm sorry? Somebody say something, it was you. I'm very big on educating my kids about certain events and milestones in history. I think it's very important to let them know what happened before, so it doesn't happen again. And tomorrow is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. It's a day that commemorates the victims of the Holocaust, which resulted in the murder of one-third of the Jewish people along with countenance other minorities between 1933 and 1935, 1945 by Nazi Germany. And January 27th, which is tomorrow, is designated every year as a day to commemorate the date that Auschwitz concentration camp was liberated in 1945. It's also a day where we use to promote Holocaust education. I believe that the world has an obligation to honor the victims, empathize with and learn from the survivors, and pay tribute to those who fought in World War II to bring this genocide to an end. The UN designates each Remembrance Day with a guiding theme. This year's theme is home and belonging. And it highlights the humanity of the Holocaust victims and survivors who had their home and sense of belonging ripped from them by the perpetrators of the Holocaust. The violence of exclusion began with disinformation and hate speech that lent support to systemic injustice, discrimination, and marginalization, and ended with genocidal killing. And the theme reminds us of our responsibility to respond with humanity to the victims of atrocity crimes, to always counter hate speech, antisemitism, Holocaust distortion and denial and prejudice, and to do all we can to prevent future genocide of any group. I encourage all to read firsthand accounts of those survivors of the Holocaust, which I've done with my kids. I do it every year. And I think it's a way that you honor the day, members of the victims alive. And I think it's really touching, it's moving, it puts a lot into perspective for today, for us, and all things that we take for granted. So that's all. Thank you very much for listening, have a nice evening, and you're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Beer. I don't have anything to add tonight. I'm keeping short, I know. I know. Because I like to, usually like to hear myself talk. Uh, I'm not going to do that to people today, especially Samantha Armstrong. She's DDR her soaps and she needs to get home. But no further comments received, the business discussed. Please have a motion in second to adjourn this meeting.
I'm okay. I guess.
You got your second. She's already voting.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, yes. All right, our next meeting is February 9th. Ladies and gentlemen of the village board, be good to yourselves and each other.
And your neighbors.
Good night.
Good night, buddy.